Acknowledgement that the city is Fort Saskatchewan is located on Treaty Six territory in Métis Nation of Alberta District eleven. And we recognize that we stand upon the land that carries the footsteps of many indigenous people, including the Niho'wak, Dene, Blackfoot, Salto, Nakota Sioux, and Métis. The city honors the first peoples of this land and is committed to fostering reconciliation through relationship building, knowledge gathering, and education. Everybody's a city person here. Alright, so with that, uh, we will begin with approval of the June eighteenth, uh, two thousand and twenty-four Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Counselor Abatoye.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we can't, the council approves the committee of the whole minutes of the, of June sixteen.
Thank you.
Eighteenth, as presented and circulated.
Thank you. Are there any errors or admissions? If not, I'll close the motion. Please cast your vote. And that is carried unanimously, and I will ask if there's any delegations. I'm not seeing anybody who I don't know in the audience, so I assume not. And just before we get on to our first item, I just, uh, will, um, mention that we do have a three thirty presentation in camera. If we're not finished our public business by then, we will actually pop, uh, go into in camera, deal with that presentation, and then return for any items. So just so that everybody knows that, uh, I will be watching the clock for three thirty. Okay, so with that, the first item we have is fire response call breakdown Todd Martin's presenting.
Good afternoon, your worship and council. Uh, my name is Andrew Buchanan. I am the Deputy Chief of Operations and Training for the Fort Saskatchewan Fire Department. And I'm here today to present, uh, the call response breakdown to you.
That was Andrew.
Andrew, correct.
Thank you.
Your worship, just before we get started, um, I might have to step out. Um, we do have a, a fire that just came in, so if I get a call, I just might have to leave.
Okay.
So just a brief overview on the presentation today. I'm gonna go over some, uh, industry definitions as a whole, uh, for council and for your worship. I'm gonna be going over some overall call for service trends, um, diving a bit into NFPA standards compared to the actuals that we're currently having within our city. This is gonna do, um, time parameters in the alarm handling, shoot time, travel, and total response parameters. So industry definition, so to start this off, uh, for your worship and for council and for everybody else in the room, I want to give you a snapshot of what it looks like when a citizen of Fort Saskatchewan calls nine one one for help. So whether that's for medical aid, whether that's for fire aid, what does that response time continuum look like? And what is that timeframe? Uh, how is it broken down? So as a member of Fort Saskatchewan calls nine one one, uh, that is triggered into our nine one one agreement partner in Strathcona County. That therefore then triggers the preemption or sorry, the, um, pre-alerts our firefighters in station. From that point, our firefighters, um, respond with our shoot time. So our shoot time is the time when our firefighters are first notified of the call from our dispatch center. And then by the time that that apparatus physically leaves the station. Our travel time then is composed of the response time while our members are currently at the hall or whether they're currently out in the community, the total time it takes for our apparatus to leave the station and get to the address in need. So to further break down some of our total, um, our definitions, our total intervention time is the elapsed time between the incident occurring and the time incident management begins. Our alarm handling is then a total time that is triggered and notified within Strathcona County nine one one center until our firefighters are notified in the station. Our shoot times is the time segment therefore that begins when dispatch notifies the firefighters until the response vehicle leaves for the station for response. Travel time is highlighted previously is the total amount of time that our firefighters are either leaving from the station to the address or are already out in the community, whether it be they're doing, uh, inspections, public education, um, a community event, the total amount of time that it takes that apparatus to travel to that location. And then finally, the total response time is the time begins when that nine one one call is activated, so that community member has called for help all the way into the time that our apparatus show up on scene. So in twenty twenty review, of review, kind of where were we at? So if we look at this and we look at all the different parameters in terms of alarm handling, shoot time, travel time, and response time performance, it is evident with these statistics that we did have a lot of areas for improvements. And with the statistics that are to follow and the numbers that you were gonna see, we're gonna highlight some of the areas where the FSFD has significantly increased response times and where there's still some areas that we can work and improve on. So overall call for service trends, so I wanna highlight where we're currently at with our call volume and show where the increases of demand are for our fire department. Currently, right now, as you can see, one of the most highest statistics and fifty-nine percent of our total call volume is medical related. So as you can see, between twenty seven and twenty eighteen, our numbers are lower, and you'll see a significant jump from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. And what that is accountable for is the time that we became a full-time fire department and the time that we joined the Alberta MFR Medical First Response Program that initiates certain call determinants that triggers a medical aid response from our two frontline apparatus here in Shored Park. A highlight of note you can see in medical, so in, at the end of July, we were at five hundred ninety calls for medical related. As of August, we've already surpassed our entire twenty twenty-three number and anticipate that number to steadily grow. I wanted to break down a little bit further, uh, other than the black and white of medical versus fire calls. So medical calls when they are triggered, um, have a specific response, but as you can see, there's many incident subcategories for our fire response. So I wanted to highlight some of the more specific areas that is in current demand of our fire department and what sort of fire-related calls were being called out for. A lot of the stats that I will present today will show you the difference between medical and fire. I just wanted to highlight the importance that there's many subcategories and many sub- incidences that break down into the fire response. Now, I'm not sure if everybody, uh, your worship or council is aware of the NFPA seventeen standard definition. But as I did jump into the statistical analysis, I wanted to just highlight what the definition of that is and where these numbers come from. So the NFPA is standard for the National Fire Protection Association. And again, this is the minimum requirements for resource deployment for areas such as fire suppression, emergency medical services, and special operations. And is further categorized into three subsections of low, medium, and high hazard. Now, within the NFPA seventeen ten performance objective, there are specific performance objectives. Again, at this time, with our city directive and our city policy, we are not currently targeting these NFPA specific numbers, but I wanted to highlight and show you what is comprised and what is composed of the NFPA seventeen ten standard. Now, within these numbers, you will see the sections of alarm answering time or alarm processing time. And the one area I really wanted to highlight on the slide is the turnout time. And turnout is just another definition for a shoot time. So if we were to look at seventeen standard and wonder the turnout versus shoot time, those are equal terms, just as we move on through the presentation. And I just wanted to point out as a highlight of this presentation was the chat versus discuss, sorry, uh, shoot time specifically. The NFPA seventeen standard has a sixty-second response for medical or EMS and an eighty-second response for fire. So in comparison, a side-by-side, um, look between the NFPA seventeen ten standard and our current FSD service level, you will note on the left side of this column, all of the NFPA seventeen ten standards in regards to alarm answering, alarm processing, shoot, and travel time for first arriving units, and then in the case of a second alarm, a large scarril fire of the anticipation or the expectation of additional units to arrive on scene. On the right-hand side, you will see the FSFD current service level, which is something that we are still looking at and still looking at revamping, is the through six hundred seconds, ninetieth percentile of the time for that first arriving unit on scene. So as we move through these next series of four statistical analysis that I show you, I just want you to keep that in mind of the NFPA standard on the left compared to our current FSFD service level on the right. So the first time parameter we're gonna look at is alarm handling. Again, this is the process that comes from our partners down in Strathcona County with our nine one one agreements that processes the call, takes the call from our citizen in Fort Saskatchewan, and triggers a response for our members in our stations. So as we can see here, if we look at these stats moving forward, if we specifically look at medical and we look at fire, we can see that is, these are statistically improving year by year. With medical, as of July twenty twenty-four, with a seventy-two second, uh, average, and, uh, these are all in seconds, so seventy-two seconds. And then if we look at the fire, we're at a hundred and thirty seconds. So again, if we were to go and look at all incidents compared as a whole, our alarm handling, alarm processing is occurring at that seventy-two second mark. But in comparison, if we were to show it to the NFPA sixty-four second compliance, we would be compliant eighty-seven percent of the time. So overall, we are seeing alarm processing times improving. Um, again, improvement is being seen. Uh, Fire Chief Martins and myself have been meeting with Strathcona County dispatchers with their deputy chiefs um, in regards to how can we increase, um, uh, shoot times, alarm times, et cetera. There are processes in play. We are currently reviewing our nine one one agreements. Uh, there's many training initiatives built in, site visits. We've currently had Strathcona County at the fire station to talk about even new technology that we can pre-alert our firefighters, uh, sooner and more efficiently. That'll improve our overall shoot times and our overall total response times as a whole. A main, uh, main area of focus for this is our shoot time. And again, I wanna focus on the two primary areas here, being fire and being medical. So again, a shoot time is that time once that firefighter is notified or alerted in the hall or noted on the radio until the time that apparatus books on by the station officer and is responding to that call. So if we look at the shoot time as a whole, as of July twenty twenty-four, when this data was collected up to, our fire response shoot time is currently ninety-seven seconds, and our medical shoot time is currently ninety-four seconds. So if we were to break this down further and look at the ninetieth percentile, we'd be at the ninety-nine seconds for the Fort Saskatchewan Fire Department. So for compliance, we're meeting that ninety percent. But in comparison, again, to the NFPA, uh, standard, the eighty-second compliance, we would only be meeting that seventy-nine percent of the time. Now, there's a lot of different factors that go into shoot time. So whether the firefighters are currently at the hall, if they're right by the truck, if they're out in the community doing an inspection, uh, if they're doing a public education event, whatever it may be, there's many different factors that can go into a shoot time, including the difference between a medical shoot time and a fire shoot time, being that our fire, uh, response requires obviously a full gear up in PPE. So we have seen an improvement over, uh, the last several years. Uh, what can we attribute this to? So the introduction of a second apparatus. We do have a two-tiered response now in the city of Fort Saskatchewan with a frontline squad and a frontline tower truck. Uh, collective bargaining agreements, uh, development of a response matrix for multiple apparatus response. A lot of factors are coming into improvements of our shoot times. Some of the factors that we've worked on in-house is the movement of the actual apparatus in the station that is closer to our firefighters. So our firefighters don't have a further distance to travel. Um, we've, uh, done station renovations. We continually evaluate our shoot times with our members and look for areas that we can improve upon. So this is something that is discussed at almost every start of shift, uh, for crews, talking about how we can improve our shoot times and how we can be more efficient and get out the door to help our citizens. So again, for the travel time, if we were to look at the fire and look at the medical specifically, as of July twenty twenty-four, it's taken us an average around four hundred and ninety-nine seconds to get that apparatus from the station or out in the community to that citizen's house. So for the ninetieth percentile, we're looking at four hundred and nine seconds. And if we were to compare that to the NFPA equivalent of the two hundred and forty seconds, we would only be meeting that forty-one percent of the time, which is quite low if that was our standard. So total response, so what it looks like, so that total response, so that, by the time that citizen has called nine one one, they're asking for help, whether it be medical, it'll be fire, whatever the reason may be. What do our numbers look like and how fast are we getting to our community members in need? So again, if we look at fire up to July twenty twenty-four, on average, it's taken us up to about six hundred and thirty-four seconds. For our medical, it's five hundred and six seconds. So within the ninetieth percentile, it's the statistic that we're looking at, we're meeting five hundred and twenty-four seconds on average. But to break it down further, with the city six hundred second compliance, we're meeting that ninety-five percent of the time. If we were to meet the NFPA three hundred and eighty-four second compliance, we would only be meeting that sixty-nine percent of the time. So, we, in turn, in regards to the total response time, some of the systems that we put into play within the city, if you're not aware, is the preemption system within our fire apparatus. So we do have signaling ability to turn the lights in our favor, to turn the lights green. So that is something that we have noticed, uh, significant improvement upon our, uh, response time guidelines. But it's still something that cannot be solely relied upon as the, uh, only factor in improving our total response time. So we look at things like weather, road construction, heavy traffic, industry traffic, and we contribute about a ten percent variance within those total response numbers that can change those. The final slide that I wanted to discuss with you and wanted to show with you is the summary of the ninetieth percentile. So this is regards to just structure fires. So just confirmed structure fires within our city. And how would we be compliant compared to the NFPA seventeen standard and city policy over a three-year average? So if we were to take all of our, uh, averages from twenty twenty-two to July twenty twenty-four, we'd be sitting at around the seven hundred and five second mark. Again, in comparison to the NFPA seventeen, uh, three hundred and eighty-four second compliance, we would only be meeting that thirty-four percent of the time if that was our true standard. Our city policy right now, uh, at six hundred seconds compliance, we are still only meeting that eighty-six percent of the time. Highlight this further again, um, within the ninetieth percentile, we're still, we're still striving obviously above ninety percent, but we're currently still not meeting it at that six hundred second city policy. Thank you for your time on this.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation. I will open it up for questions. I'm just, I'll start with the first question. So the medical ones, uh, so when somebody phones for a medical one, they dial nine one one, does it, it comes to you or does it go to like the ambulance services? How do they differentiate?
So it'll go to Strathcona County, and then when you call nine one, if you, if you've experienced calling nine one, they'll ask you for police fire, um, or ambulance, and from there, your call is rerouted again. So if it is a specific fire call, so if a citizen of Fort Saskatchewan's house is on fire, Strathcona County dispatch will immediately start dealing with that incident right then and there. If it's a medical call, it gets redirected to the AHS system, which then slows down the response, comes back to our dispatch center in Strathcona County, and then triggers that alarm. So there's a well-known gap within the dispatching model that can delay specifically medical response to the community.
And when you're looking at the data, do you take that into consideration? I guess my question is, so how do they determine, is it going to ambulance services or it's going to you specifically, or does it go to both?
It can go to both. It's gonna be situational dependent, but in terms if they've asked for an ambulance immediately, depending on the nature of that call and the call determinant, so as the dispatcher takes in the information for that medical call, they have specific, uh, a card system for determinants that triggers the level of response required due to the nature of the, the interpreted, um, emergency, uh, at hand. So, um, for example, a, a, uh, call we see quite a bit is, is a ten delta, and what a ten delta reflects is a chest pain. And anything that has triggered a Charlie, depending how far, uh, an ambulance is away, and then auto-launch for our medical aid is what's required a delta or an echo, and an echo being the most severe of the call matrix. So an echo typically is reserved for a cardiac arrest or an imminent, uh, medical event that could progressively lead to death. So echo's being the most severe of the call, and alpha's being the most, uh, I guess minimal, depending on the call information and the interpretation that dispatch has of the information that the caller is giving.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Blizzard.
Thanks for the presentation. Um, actually, all these and you're going your below. I'm very impressed with your response times. Uh, I think we're doing good, but I guess there's always room for improvement. So I was gonna, kind of along the same lines, the medical, so I guess, what, what are the qualifications of firefighters? Because when it goes to ambulance, if it's a heart attack, I'm gonna assume they would call ambulance then versus fire department?
Yes, so absolutely. So under the Alberta, uh, Medical First Response Program, we are currently certified up to, uh, the first aid level, and with some of our members being trained to the advanced first aid level. Uh, with the two-tiered system of the provincial ambulance, you can either be a primary care paramedic or an advanced care paramedic, with the old terminology being an EMT versus paramedic. So they would have the full skills to intervene with that heart attack. We would be able to respond and provide supplementary help with moving the patient, some minimal treatments such as oxygen therapy, but we wouldn't have the advanced capabilities at this point to provide what the ambulance provides for that patient. But based on the severity of that call, we get tagged on to assist the ambulance. A lot of the times, our crews are called upon for, um, strategic things such as moving the patient safely and effectively or getting the stretcher ready in the back of the ambulance, or, uh, minor interventions that we can do at this time.
And has there ever been talk or consideration? Cause I know some fire departments are combined, right?
Yeah, so just in comparison of a fire department model, so Strathcona County, for example, is what's called an integrated service. So that means they provide fire, but they also have an ambulance contract within Alberta Health Services that must provide an ALS or a BLS ambulance on a daily basis. Whereas if you're in the Alberta Medical First Response Program, you don't have a said contract with AHS, but you are able to provide specific medical skills, depending on how highly your department is trained in regards to the medical field.
Okay. More, I think.
Your worship through the Council Blizzard. So that is something that we're, we are looking at, um, currently in our service levels. Um, we're reviewing all the service levels, and that is one of the items, um, that we're reviewing is, is what type of, of training? Um, and, and, uh, how high do we wanna go with that, that medical training? Um, since we are responding to those calls and we're already providing that level of care, um, is this something that we should be looking at some other types of skills, uh, for our, our staff to, um, 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 provide on scene while we wait for an ambulance? And, and sometimes we're waiting up anywhere from fifteen to twenty minutes for an ambulance.
And I think sometimes you guys are sent there if there's no ambulances around too, right? So I would have to agree with that. Might be a good idea.
Yes, absolutely. There's a lot of times there are actually no ambulances within the city of Fort Saskatchewan. I've worked, uh, on the ambulance for, uh, fifteen plus years of my career, including, uh, several years in Strathcona County, and there were several times where very serious emergencies came in within city of Fort Saskatchewan, and we were responding from Shored Park to get all the way here. So and the event of a cardiac arrest, a stroke, time is of the essence, and to be able to get that help faster to our citizens is a huge step forward in terms of the medical training that we could bring to the community.
Thank you. I have more, but, uh.
I'll put you on round two. Counselor Makin.
Thank you. Uh, a very interesting report, lots of information to go through. Um, I just have a couple of questions. Um, the first one is on, I'm on page twenty-two on the travel performance. And I was just looking for comment on this. So it does, if you're looking at up to July twenty twenty-four, um, the numbers do look better over the past couple of years, but in almost all of those categories, the numbers were better in twenty twenty-one, and we've put in significant, uh, work, uh, into improving the fire department. So I, I was just curious when I noticed that, like, why it's, it's gotten better the two years, but the year before that, it was kind of better than all of them. So like, is that just, uh, kind of a blip year where things were lower calls or?
The one thing, just a quick glance of this as well is, is different calls within these parameters will trigger different responses. So some will be a hot call, which is lights and sirens, and some will not be. So especially, uh, prime example may be like a public service, uh, maybe a battery's out and a smoke detector and a community member is just unsure and wants some education. So that won't be a lights and siren response. So I think that may change some of, uh, the overall, uh, stats on that, as well as secondary trucks as well. So if we're looking at a secondary, uh, truck responding, again, one may be responding uh, lights and sirens, which we refer to as code three, and the second one may be providing backup if it's a, a minor incidence, and maybe responding, uh, without lights and sirens, depending on the nature of the call.
Okay. Um, I'll leave that one for now. Um, on the shoot times, excuse me, and I'm sorry, I don't have to flip back here. Um, on the shoot times performance, I guess I'm looking at page nineteen. Sorry, I made all these little notes. Um, I was just curious. I kind of felt like when I was looking at this, I was kind of expecting the shoot times to all be better, kind of overall with, um, with the renovation and all the work that I know that you guys are doing in there. So I guess just comment on why we see some of them getting better and some of them not as much.
Yeah, I can absolutely take that. So again, there's many things and many human factors and such that come into a shoot time. So again, we can have shoot times that look, uh, stellar, they're perfect, maybe our crew is already in the truck, uh, they had just been coming back from a community event. Um, so again, they're already dressed, they're ready to go, they book on immediately, and that shoot time is great. Now we build in the factor two, maybe our crews are out training. So every day on day shift specifically, our crews are out training for several hours throughout the day. So again, depending on the type of training they're doing, they have to get out of the equipment that they may be currently in, the training that they're doing, come back into the station, put their gear back on, and then, uh, transition to the call. So there's a lot of different factors that can come into shoot times, um, as well as factors even having members that, somebody might have to go to the bathroom quickly. Somebody may be in the bathroom when the call comes. There's a lot of other factors that sort of contribute to the overall effectiveness of a shoot time. I'm in agreeance with you that we can still have areas of improvement, absolutely. I just wanted to highlight some of the factors that go into, I guess, a multitude of reasons why shoot times can be sort of all over the map. It all depends, uh, where the firefighters are at that time, are they already in their gear? Um, again, uh, middle of the night, jumping out of bed, coming down, getting their gear on. Sometimes people go to the bathroom quickly. Uh, there's a lot of different factors that go in shoot times. But, uh, I can assure you that Chief Martins and myself are looking at consistent ways that we can improve this with our crews. And I think some of the measures that we've taken are a step forward, but there is still room to work on, and that's one of the things we're gonna address.
Your worship through the Council Makin. So, uh, we are also looking at some other initiatives, uh, currently like station alerting, um, and countdown clocks. So our, our staff can see when they're in the negative, if they are running behind, so they'll have that visual. Um, other things with station alerting does, so in the evenings, it, evenings do slow the response times. Um, so, um, um, that piece is just turning, anything from just turning the lights on for our staff, so they know a call's coming in, the pre-alerting. So we're looking at all those types of things that, that might benefit us in, in the future. And the other thing that we, we continue to do is, is the fire inspection program. So, um, we are out in the community, and depending on where we are in the community and what building we're in, uh, that does add to, to our shoot time, um, because we're running to that truck now if we're in the middle of the hospital or we're in a basement somewhere. So those are some of the other factors that we have.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Neuen.
Hey, thanks for the presentation. I just had a question, once again, on, on medical incident calls. Uh, cause it's, it's quite alarming to me, pun intended, that from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three and, you know, predicting the numbers in twenty twenty-four, there's quite an exponential increase that you think would be associated with, um, the population growth or, or linear according to population growth. So just can you, can you explain? Cause I think in twenty seventeen, I'm seeing about a twenty percent, uh, medical calls, uh, over to total, and then twenty twenty-three, I think it's around sixty percent of, of the calls. So that's, that's obviously tying up the bulk of, of the calls that come in. So what, are we getting less healthy as a population? Are people calling in that a lot of times don't, don't actually need emergency services or what, what's the explanation?
So that's a, that's a great question and a, and a burning question that's trying to be answered provincially at this time as well. So I think it's well documented and well known that ambulances are extremely short across the province in our, in our major areas and our smaller areas. One of the things that we're noticing is an increase in demand for, um, non-necessary emergencies. So people are activating nine one one for non-specific emergencies. Um, prime example is patients are, uh, citizens are experiencing more multi, more and more difficulties getting a family physician, for example. And if they can't get an appointment with their family physician, they're calling nine one one because the idea is still, if I call an ambulance and I show up to the hospital, I get in before everybody else. So that's still a very strong mentality that is provincial-wide, national-wide, that the thought is if nine one one picks me up, no matter how basic or how severe it is, that I will automatically get in, and that's not the case. So again, all hospitals rely back on a triage system, so the sickest of the sick patients get seen first. So that's one major issue that's, um, I guess, cutting into demand a little bit. Um, aging population, uh, is another, um, I guess, provincially wide, uh, demand on EMS services as well. Again, um, the province is undertaking some uh, quite a bit of initiatives to try and get like inter-facility transfer, for example, so from hospital to hospital for having private systems do that. Because the demand is so high right now on our provincial ambulance system that they just simply can't keep up. We just don't have the resources. Uh, unfortunately, with a lot of communities as well, we are seeing a significant increase in drug use right now in the community as well as violent and psychiatric calls as well, so calls for help. Um, uh, fortunately, just a few days ago as well, our, our crews went to, uh, a very difficult overdose suicide situation. So we're seeing an increase in that, we're seeing an increase in violence and demand, and the ambulance system that is currently in the city of Fort Saskatchewan right now, uh, cannot keep up with, uh, demand or staffing with the ambulances, and that's requiring additional ambulance. And that's requiring additional ambulances to come in from outside communities, as well as us being triggered on more and more events for service. So as I highlighted a little bit before, the call determinants of what triggers Fort Saskatchewan Fire Department specifically. Is typically that Delta or that Echo card. So comes in as high severity. But again, if an ambulance is not within um eight to twelve minutes of a patient, then we're triggered to go provide that first aid. But that's where our firefighters are feeling the stress because they wanna do more for our citizens, but they don't have the skills yet to be able to do that. So we're getting on scene fifteen, twenty, sometimes twenty-five to thirty minutes before an ambulance arrives. And our crews are so limited with the current medical scope of practice that they can deliver, that they feel it's almost, they wanna go beyond the handholding. And they wanna be able to provide, you know, up, provide a a better medical scope of practice to truly intervene with life-saving interventions to make a difference. And right now, our hands are a little bit tied with the skills that we can do and to deliver to our citizens. So um I guess just to summarize your question, there's a multitude of different reasons. Um from non-necessary demand on the EMS system, uh increase in crime, drug use. Uh and violence and psychiatric stuff, we're seeing a a big, big increase right now as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, important information, so.
You're good. Okay, thank you, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you. Um good good evening, good afternoon, gentlemen. Um. I don't suppose it's a secret, Fire Chief, but but I always look at the economics and try to rationalize benefit to cost. That's just the way I'm trained. Um and I'm not arguing with anything that you've given us in your report. But I do wonder why you make reference to the NFPA two hundred and forty-second standard. When it's not part of city policy and we have no intention of trying to make it. We've made that determination as a city. So why would you reference that religiously within your within your presentation?
Your worship through the Council Kelly. So the reason it's in there um is that that is our industry standard. That's our industry best practice for all fire departments. And we all strive to meet that. And our current policy does state that as well, that we do strive to meet NFPA. Um and so we 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 capture that in our documents so we can see if we're getting close to that, where we have to adjust and where we have to tweak. So that's why it's in there, just to to give you and our citizens um what our industry and national standards are.
And I appreciate that. I I think that's an internal process that that's worthwhile, but but you're talking to council now, and this is a council report. Um I can give some background if I may, Mayor Catcher. Newly elected council seven years ago, several of us were on board on council when when the whole fire department thing. Sort of sort of mushroomed on top of us. Um in that period of time, I read an article out of the Calgary Herald. Or the City Calgary, where City Calgary has an eight-second, pardon me, an eight-minute response mandate. And and their administration said to the city council. That if we simply went to a ten-minute response mandate, over the coming ten years, we could save twenty-five million dollars per year. In fire response or emergency response costs. Um council bought it. The union representing the firefighters weighed into the fracas and council backed down. I've never forgot that. So now with all of that behind us. What Fire Chief would, a two hundred and forty-second response time, cost the city of Fort Saskatchewan?
Your worship to the council, Kelly, I I would have to look at that and see what those numbers would come out to.
It would be multiples of what we're spending now. Would that be an accurate statement?
It would increase the service level, yes.
Significantly?
I I don't have the exact dollars, but it would increase the service level, yes.
Significantly? Let's assume significantly, it's more than fifty percent.
Okay, if you can't answer.
Yeah, I I I don't know at this time.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Catcher. Put me back on.
Uh Counselor Abatoya, you're next.
Thank you for your presentation, gentlemen. Um my question is actually the opposite of Counselor Kelly's question. Uh just coming back to the NFPA um standard, cause when you were doing your presentation, you talked about it being the minimum requirement. Um you know, when it comes to emergency fire suppression and whatnot. Uh so why, so I guess we set our city standards based on the NFPA standards, right? So why are they even, if why are we not, did we set our target too low basically? If NFPA is supposed to be the minimum standard or requirements are supposed to be met in?
Your worship through Counselor Abatoya, it's it, we also have the the HIRF standard. And that's really what our policy is is set on, is that the ten minutes ninety percent of the time for our high-intensity residential fires. And NFPA does speak to that, but the NFPA standard is is not just response. NFPA is basically everything that we do. It's our um it's our, how we we uh test our trucks. What type of equipment we can use, what type of clothing we're allowed to have. So it it's kind of all encompassing on 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 what we use for the industry best practice. When we're looking at um purchasing equipment or when we're looking at service levels. Um so it's it's all in one. When we're we're looking at service levels, we do take in the NFPA into account, but we also take in the HIRF standard. And that's the ten minute ninety percent of the time, which we currently have. And we have a map that outlines what is currently outside the ten-minute response zone.
Right. Okay, thank you. Um so um Fire Chief, when we were at the fire hall um a couple of weeks ago, I don't remember, last week. Um you'd mentioned, and I think you'd alluded to it, about the medical response. And of course, we see the data, that's the highest um volume of calls you're getting. And having to be there twenty, thirty minutes, you know, um before you get the actual people that can attend to it. You talked about um getting more training for your staff, and I'm just wondering, what's the updates on that?
Your your worship through the council, Abatoya. So that's what we're looking for right now through uh our service level document, the fire service level um document. Um and updating that policy uh to come back to council on some recommendations um on the fire side as well as on the medical side. That we would um consider um changing that advanced first aid piece to um BLS or the PCP. Um designation, so our our staff has the skills to do some more of these interventions on scene that we're looking at.
Well, so that's, it's not something internal, it's something like it's policy that needs to be changed, right?
Uh your worship through the council, Abatoya, um it's a, it's a, it would be a training increase, a service level increase for the training piece. Um as far as um the MFR program, we're still currently in the Medical First Responder Program. Um that wouldn't change. Uh it wouldn't change our our call determinant. So um uh DC Buchanan spoke to the the Deltas and the Echos and the Charlies, that wouldn't change either. Uh it would just be more specific to um the 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 level of service we provide for training.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Harris.
Uh gentlemen, so we haven't seen the budget uh booklet for twenty twenty-five yet. Uh but that'll be an interesting document once it comes out. But what could you give us by way of a bit of a prelude in terms of what you will be presenting in relation to this thing? We've got response times, we've got all the other things. But what are the, what what's one nugget of truth that you're gonna present to us relative to? We should be on the lookout in the budget discussions coming up?
Your worship to the Council Harris, so right now we have the um fire station scope study that would, that's coming back to council. Um and from that, um once we have that data, um and the information from that, then that would kind of trigger. Um kind of next steps uh as well with some other initiatives that would come out of that report. Uh with that staffing, equipment, um that type of stuff. And and looking at a full year, we haven't yet had a full year of of stats as well as running in our current collective agreement. And so um this year is is the first year. And so we're seeing some major things that we're just seeing on on what we're looking at as far as numbers as well, staffing. And then what'll come out of that um that that station scope study.
Yeah, so this is all part and parcel of the one big picture of how we're going to coalesce around. Improving the overall service and improving safety and security of people who live in the city.
And then the service level document.
Okay, well, I think we all look forward to an honest discussion on that when we get to that point. So thank you for this uh bit of information.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Blessard, round two.
Would there be a ben- and I'm not talking today or tomorrow, but would there be a benefit down the road to having our own nine-one-one? Call center versus having it remote in Strathcona County?
Your worship through the Council Blizzard, um my recommendation if if uh right now would be no. Um a lot of money um um to get up and running, um plus the changes with Next Gen nine-one-one that are in place now. And yeah, and the mo- the restrictions that we have on from the province um to to operate those centers. There'd be an increase in um dispatch. Uh you'd have to go to twenty-four hour coverage. Um it's quite significant. Um previous places I worked, uh um you're talking millions and millions of dollars.
So we're good, nice and efficient right now the way we have it?
Correct.
Okay, and I was gonna ask too, this NFPA standards, are they just like the pie in the sky? You know, do they set them so that there's always something to strive for? Because that's the one thing I was looking through going, wow, is that even achievable? You know, unless conditions are perfect.
Your worship through the Council Blizzard, that that is the industry standard that we use in the fire world. That's that it's a lot of the information from that document is is embedded through um, you know, doctors and labs. And burn centers on on how they get that information, firefighter fatalities. Um some of some of the information in FPA, I I I do agree, um it is a high standard. Um and that's why for us, our our city policy is that ten ninety and and that ninety-second shoot time um right now, which um. I think is reasonable. Um and with the consistency that we're seeing, that seems to be where we're at. However, I do find that there are improvements, for sure.
Always improvements. And you know, I just look at the numbers and I think is this, they are, it is something to strive for, but is it almost the impossible goal? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you. Um let's start again. It seems to be in this, I think what I was trying to drive out with my questioning. There's nothing requiring, let me rephrase that. Is there anything requiring this city or any other municipality to live by, adhere by NFPA standards?
Your worship through the Council Kelly, no.
Thank you. So for measuring your goals, I kind of get it. Um our goal as a council, I think, set in the policy, I think you just called it the ten ninety. So ten minutes, ninety minute, ninety second shoot time, is that correct?
Correct.
So for future reports, why don't we talk about that? I do appreciate that our policy might need to be revised or revisited. And at that time, I think we would compare our policy to NFPA standards. But to constantly compare us to a standard that we're not even trying to achieve is very misleading in my mind. It's such an impossible goal for you folks, and it's a goal that council or the prior councils didn't choose to have. So why would we, why would we compare ourselves to it? And I'll answer the question for you. It would be an enormously expensive project to get to NFPA standards. Um the one comment I'd like to make, and then I, and I think I'm done, Fire Chief. The travel time. I understand that the the ten's ten minute, and I think that's a safety code requirement. I I get that in spades. But there's, the safety code also talks about. What needs to happen if the municipality can't provide that. It doesn't dictate that the municipality must provide it. It says, this is what will happen if you don't. Is that a correct statement?
Your worship through the Council Kelly, that is correct. So currently, if you are outside the ten minutes, you bill to the higher building code standard. Right now.
And we could talk about that at length. It's not part of this of this discussion. So when it comes to travel time. Why don't we, for your statistical reporting, let's cap ourselves at the travel time it takes to reach the outer edge of that envelope. And not factor anymore in because we've made the decision as a council. The city has grown past where it was when this policy was made. You physically can't do it. We acknowledge that. So let's not distort our reporting by factoring in those responses, simply because it's not possible and it's not assigned to you. Does that make sense?
Your worship through the Council Kelly, it's it's something that we could take away and look at, yep.
Um thank you. I think I'm done, Mayor Catcher. I'll take another look at my scribbles here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Macon.
Um thank you. Um on, from a service level perspective on medical calls. Do we currently have within the fire department advanced care or primary care paramedic-trained firefighters? Sorry, your mic is off now.
We do have, currently out of our twenty-five full-time staff, we currently have eight fa- trained primary care pen- paramedics. We do have one platoon chief who's an advanced care paramedic. Uh and as well as myself, I'm not actively working on the floor, but I'm a critical uh care paramedic uh for Stars as well. So I do have quite an extensive medical background as well, and that is something that we would look at in a proactive way to help um facility training. In-house for our members is the way that the Alberta MFR program works. Is not every single member needs to be immediately trained to that level. If we were to increase our scope of practice within the MFR program from first aid to um primary care paramedic. As long as we had one Alberta uh registered primary care paramedic on that truck, which we can provide at any day now. That member can work up to their scope of practice starting tomorrow, the second that that plan is implemented. And then as we have additionally trained staff, we can, we can have more and more members that can work within that primary uh scope of practice. Which would increase our medical skills to our community members tremendously.
So I think you answered where I was going with my next question on it. So in order for them to use those skills, it requires like policy change within the department. So they can go to a medical call right now, but they are restricted to what they can do despite their education.
Yes, so at this time, we do have, uh as we just highlighted, several members that are approved and registered into the province to work under that scope of practice. But currently.
So they can already?
They can if they not currently on our fire apparatus. So if they were to work, say casually for an ambulance or work for another organization, absolutely. But right now, we are limited to the lower level of the MFR program in Alberta. But there's a process that we would go through through the medical director to get approval to run the PCP level uh programming. And the second that we were approved for that and we had a plan in place, we could start implementing those skills to our citizens the next day.
Okay, and then I guess just to finish off on that, if I may, um do you recommend doing that? Is that a plan? Is that some, is that, does that require a budget?
Your worship, your Counselor Macon. So that's something we're working on right now, just the specifics. Um um i- it's, it is programming, um and there is cost to programming and 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 there would be, you know, off the top of my head over time. But there are some, a few capital things as far as the equipment piece that would have to be discussed. So that's what we're working through right now um at our level to then um discuss with LT.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um so I'm just gonna go on. Um so with regards to that, if the members were to get approval for that. So when an ambulance goes out, they actually get invo- an invoice, correct? Cause I know people I talk to, you get a two hundred and fifty dollar bill or something. So with the fire department people, so if they were to go out. Uh it does that circumvent where the ambulance doesn't get to charge them, so we're going out and doing something for free? Um how does, how does that work?
Your worship, uh no, so th- they, if an ambulance call is is called and transport is given. That ambulance service bills. Um we do not bill um to provide the the Medical First Responder Program. Um it's part of our service to go and we go and provide our care within our scope. And we don't, we don't charge for that or invoice for that. But uh but if you are transported by an ambulance, you do receive a bill.
But if our staff receive the training and start doing what the emergency responders are doing for ambulance. Uh even though they wouldn't take them somewhere on a truck, uh you you wouldn't be able to bill for that, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you. It's an interesting discussion around the medical calls. Before we had a full-time fire department, of course, the fort never had access to to medical calls from from a fire department. So somehow we managed to live till about seven years ago, and then all of a sudden it's a basic necessity. And and I don't know how that, well, I do know how that evolves, actually. Um it's a societal thing. It's nothing you're doing wrong, and it's nothing council's doing wrong. But we have to be careful on what we offer because it will very soon become a necessity. After that comment, I'd like to suggest, tell you that I thought the report was good, so don't misjudge my tone. Um it's a way bigger report than I envisioned when I made. It's a way bigger report than I envisioned when I made my motion. And I would, I would like to suggest that now that you've given us the background. That when you come back to us in six months, you come back with the two or three tables, and here's how we did it, any questions? Here's how we're doing, any questions? And just leave it to five minutes of your time or, cause I think you already have that data, so it's. The time necessary for you to come here and let council take a look at it and 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 again, I thank you and look forward to the next time around.
Thank you, Council Makin.
Thank you, um, just to follow up on what Mayor Catcher asked. I think that the difference with an ambulance is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that that the patient is paying for the transport, they're not actually paying. For the care, so the fire would also provide care, but not the transport, cause that's actually where the bill is for. Is that right?
Your worship through to Council Makin, you are correct.
Okay.
Yes, um, we, the Alberta Health Services does subsidize for um supplies for us. Um, for some of our medical equipment that would continue, um, regardless of the program you were involved in, so whether that be IV fluids or Band-Aids. Um, there are some subsidies there, um, that that would come with it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that looks like all the questions, so I think you're out of the hot seat now. So thank you very much, uh, you have a very interesting occupation. Your A's, your B's, your C's, kind of remind me of pilots, but keep up the good work and uh continue to keep our community safe. So, thank you. All right, the next item that we have. One is animal licensing and the dreaded feral cats. Corinne Rayner and Ben Sharp.
Good afternoon, your worship and members of council, my name is Corinne Rayner and I'm the Director of Protective Services for the city. With me is Sergeant Ben Sharp, the municipal enforcement supervisor. On June the eighteenth, we presented the Responsible Pet Ownership Bylaw to council. And we were asked to bring back two pieces of information, one was animal licensing and the merits of animal licensing. And the second was a report on how to manage feral cats. This presentation will give you an overview of these two reports with administration's recommendations. We are looking at council's feedback today, and then we will be bringing back the Responsible Pet Ownership Bylaw on October the eighth. Under section three of the current Animal Control Bylaw C seven dash sixteen, there is a requirement for all pet owners to have a license. If their animal is over six months of age. The city, the city's fees for animal licensing is thirty eight dollars an annual fee for a neutered or spayed cat or dog. And fifty dollars for an unaltered cat or dog. When setting these fees and charges uh for animal control, municipal enforcement considers a pricing, pricing methodology that looks at our. Indirect indirect costs, and we also do a jurisdictional scan of our comparators to look at where we sit. As far as what we're charging for that fee. Currently, right now, we sit in about the the mid range, so with the annual fees, um. They range between twenty dollars to fifty dollars and we're sitting at thirty eight dollars for an animal license. Two municipalities have eliminated the animal licensing requirement within their bylaws. And there are some other municipalities that are also considering this as well. Taking a look at the benefits of pet licensing, the first is pet reunification. Historically, this has played the key role um in reuniting lost pets with their owners quickly and efficiently. With advancements in technology and social media and microchipping, this requirement is less um. Beneficial than it used to historically play within our bylaw. Another benefit is that pet owners will receive uh a reduced rate on the kenneling fee if they have purchased a license, so. If their animal has to stay in our care for twenty four hours or more, then they do get a reduced rate on that kenneling fee. Sorry, I bounced ahead a little bit. Um, regulation and control of pet populations is another benefit to having a licensing requirement. Um, with a licensing requirement, we require that um there is a vaccination when they get a license. So that helps with public safety, um, and regulation and control of the populations. It helps us to plan our resources when it comes to animal control, different things throughout the city. However, this benefit needs compliance with animal licensing in order for the municipality to. To realize that benefit of regulation and control. And the third benefit is revenue. One of the primary reasons for maintaining animal licensing is that the revenue is used to offset the costs for animal control services with the city. In twenty twenty three, approximately thirty one hundred licenses were sold, generating a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars in revenue for twenty twenty three. There is also revenue from fines, and you'll see a correlation between our fine revenue and the revenue from licenses sold. As our officers have gained compliance with the licensing requirement, the fines have decreased. Um, it's just one of our ways in in getting that compliance with the licensing aspect of the bylaw. Moving on to the disadvantages of the licensing requirement is the compliance challenges. We've had discussions in council before on this, on this um challenge that we face. The lack of compliance, com- compliance with this requirement of the bylaw has been persistent over many, many years. Um, even when we had a lower fee, we still did see low compliance rates with the licensing requirement. And that's why we're not recommending lowering the the licensing fee, because historically, that has shown that it doesn't gain compliance. Public perception is the second disadvantage. This is one of the areas where municipal enforcement receives a lot of negative feedback from pet owners as to the value. Of having a license, and they often will question what value is this, especially if I am a responsible pet owner. That doesn't let my pet out of my yard or I'm always having it on the leash. Some of the feedback received is that it's an extra tax to the law abiding citizens that are getting um pet licenses. And that it's a financial burden to those pet owners. The third disadvantage to the pet licensing requirement is the administrative workload that it has on our staff. Licensing and maintaining is very resource in- intensive. It's something that no longer realizes its intended perp- and its intended purpose as it once did. Making this work of low value and lower priority compared to our other workloads. There are multiple staff that are involved in administering um and enforcing the licensing. So the city hall staff here um pro- process the majority of the animal licenses. And then we have an online portal as well, municipal enforcement staff and our community peace officers. The IT department as well are all involved in in this process. And then the third disav- or the final disadvantage there is the outstanding licenses that we continue to see. Typically, each year between seven hundred and a thousand licenses go un- unrenewed or other outstanding or delinquent. So this is one of the the problems that we've had with the workload is following up on those outstanding licenses. The city averages about three thousand um licenses sold per year. And with the population of our size and close to twelve thousand dwelling units, we've, as we've discussed before, this is probably low. Um, and shows our compliance rates. Reminders go out in the email or out in the mail and email to pet owners. Um, they can receive up to four emails or or mailed uh letters reminding them to renew their license. Each year, their average is seven hundred and fifty to a thousand that go outstanding. One of the things that we did this last year was we took a different approach, and after the four reminders that went out. We issued another letter with a violation tag in the mail. And we still have seen uh only a twenty percent compliance rate with those violation tags and reminders that have gone out. So we're still continuing to see um. Low compliance, even after all those reminders and tickets. The city resources, like I've mentioned, um, in twenty twenty three, we received a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars in revenue. Through licensing, which offsets the costs of providing this service. Approximately twelve hundred and seventy seven total hours go into the issuing of pet licenses. And the bulk of those, like I've mentioned, is sold here at City Hall, at the Protective Services Building. About a thousand licenses are sold or renewed online, but the online portal does require city staff. To be checking that portal weekly as well, so there is some significant workload there. The community peace officers are spending over five hundred hours. Um, of time gaining compliance and following up on those outstanding licenses. So the net revenue from licensing is seventy three thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. With the analysis of the city resources required to administer pet licensing and the challenges that staff receive when getting compliance. Um, one option to consider is to eliminate pet licensing requirement. And some of the implications to eliminating pet licensing would be that we would replace the licensing requirement. With having to have an identification tag similar to what Strachan County has done. So within the bylaw, all pets would have to have an identification tag with a phone number on it. Um, that would greatly assist and streamline and actually modernize the process of reuniting pets with their owners. Currently, right now, our officers come in contact with an animal that has its animal licensing tag on it. Officers have to contact the dispatchers, they have to do a database check. And there is some time lost there in in contacting that pet owner. With an identification tag, it really will streamline that process. Pet reunification will still happen through the identification tag, as well as we will continue to use social media. Our residents in Fort Saskatchewan already reunite the pets, as you can see on social media. Often without even involving municipal enforcement services as at all. There are um social media sites dedicated to Fort Sask lost and found pets. So the community really does take care in in helping reunite um pets with their owners. Revenue from fines due to contraventions of the bylaw should go up. As we've increased some of those fines within the new Responsible Pet Ownership Bylaw. And um a change in the enforcement focus of focusing on those. Concerns of dogs at off leash on our trails and dogs at lodge large or cats at large. We will change the for enforcement focus to some of those more serious aspects. Eliminating licensing will create a cost savings for pet owners. Um, and I think that will be something that would be well received within the community. The financial impact, however, to eliminating licensing requirement would be a revenue reduction of a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. In the twenty twenty five budget. The fifty four thousand dollars in expenses will not be eliminated from the budget as primarily this is personnel costs. And so they would be reallocated or redistributed to other um tasks within those areas. So administration is recommending the elimination of the animal licensing requirement. This consideration is driven by a thorough evaluation of all of this information and the benefits. Of licensing compared to the resources required to administer and enforce this process. With consistently low compliance rates and increasingly negative community feedback. The use of social media for pet reunification shows that the licensing requirement. Is no longer effectively serving its intended purpose. By removing this requirement, staff can redirect their efforts toward higher party tasks and an enforcement focus. On more serious aspects of the the Responsible Pet Ownership Bylaw. So it would just be a more efficient and effective use um of city resources if it was eliminated. I'll now turn it over to Sergeant Sharp to um provide you with the presentation on managing feral cats.
Good afternoon, uh, so administration was tasked uh with reporting back information on options to manage. Feral cats within our community. The approach uh that we had taken to prepare these options uh was conducting a jurisdictional scan of other municipalities. And what we found from that is that um, for the most part, the animal bylaws uh. From surrounding communities do not typically have provisions for dealing with feral cats. We've also consulted with shelters and rescues, uh, as well as looking through our own data. To analyze uh and determine the extent of this issue within our community. So first off, it's important to differentiate between uh feral cat versus a cat at large. The feral cat uh is one that has escaped domestication and presents as wild or born in a wild state. They do not transition to house pets and are very aggressive, making them difficult to catch or handle. Feral cats, like other wild animals, can carry disease. They hunt and kill other small animals and impact birds and their habitats. In comparison, a cat at large is socialized to people and is easily adopted. These are typically domesticated and permitted by the owner to roam free off of their property. Domesticated cats will also hunt uh and kill birds or other small animals. So the graph before you hear uh illustrates the total number of cat complaints that MES municipal enforcement has received. Cats at large are a common reported issue in the community, as opposed to feral cat complaints that we have received. From twenty eighteen to twenty twenty four, our department received eleven calls for service specifically for feral cats. And over the last three years, only three cats per year have been reported as feral uh to our department when they come in as calls. Municipal enforcement has not seen a large number of complaints or concerns surrounding feral cats. So administration has compiled four options to address the concern of feral cats. Option one being maintaining our current service level. So municipal enforcement will continue to deal with domesticated cats and cats at large within the community as per our current service level. There would be an increase in community education with this option uh for responsible pet ownership and cats at large. We'd be looking to eliminate our cat trap rental fees uh to further provide a service for managing cats at large within the community. We'd be increasing our operating budget by about ten to fifteen thousand dollars to help secure rescue and shelter assistance with housing and intaking our cats. That's one of the main issues that we have right now with our current service level is solidifying somewhere to take these animals. As we're not a long term holding facility. Option two would be trap and euthanize feral cats. Uh, municipal enforcement with this option would accept feral cats, and we would hold on to them for seventy two hours within our own facility. To ensure that there's no ownership of this animal. After the seventy two hours, the cat would then be euthanized. Some operational and financial impacts with this option would include additional officer training to handle feral animals. And an increased workload that would come with that. There'd also be roughly that ten to fifteen thousand dollar operational cost associated with euthanizing these animals, those vet bills. And we would also have to look at kennel ren- kennel renovations to house these feral cats. And additional research would be required to determine a budget recommendation for that. But our current kennels are not set up to intake feral cats at this time. We'll go back one, sorry. And this does create an increased risk both for physical hazards with our officers as well as psych- psychological hazards for them. Some other considerations with this option uh would include. That this may help control the feral cat population, however, it may also draw in new feral cats. As territory from the euthanized cat would become vacant, and this is known as the vacuum effect. There could be negative community reaction to euthanizing these cats. There would be liability issues if a domesticated cat presents as feral and is subsequently euthanized. And also liability from disease transfer uh from feral cats, wild cats, to a domesticated cat that's housed in the same animal shelter. Option number three is our trap, neuter and return option. So municipal enforcement, much like option number two, uh, would accept the feral cat. We would hold for seventy two hours to ensure there's no ownership over it, and then it would be transferred to a vet to be spayed and neutered. The cat would then be returned to municipal enforcement for approximately one to two weeks for recovery after this operation. And then it would be returned to the location that it was found and released back. So some operational and financial impacts with this option. Is it may require assessing staffing with the increase in service level and the time required for officers caring for these feral cats. With it being the seventy two hours plus the additional one to two weeks after that. Uh, we would require additional training, and there would be vet expenses uh as well for the procedures, and these procedures can range anywhere from. Two hundred and thirty five dollars per cat to three hundred and sixty. Uh, which works out to about an additional ten to fifteen thousand dollars. Again, we would also need to look at kennel runner renovations to house these cats. Um, and it carries the same concerns as option two surrounding disease transfer and physical hazards to our officers. Um, and it carries the same concerns as option two surrounding disease transfer and physical hazards to our officers. Um, and then there could also be a potential negative community reaction. Uh, as they see officers returning a cat to a location that was picked up, basically releasing it back at large. Our fourth option and final option is the a barn program or a barnyard program. Uh, we would partner with surrounding farms and acreages. These farms and acreages would apply to our program to be put on a contact list. This option functions similar to option three, the trap, neuter and release uh, program. Where we would intake the animal, hold, span, neuter, but in this case, rather than releasing it back out to where it was found, it's going to a barn or an acreage. Some operational and financial impacts with this option. Are similar to option three, the trap, neuter and return. Having to pay for that cost of span and neuter and holding on to that cat for one to two weeks post-operation. Uh, we would have to seek out farms and acreages that would be willing to apply to this program and they would have to be vetted through uh. To be able to be put onto that list. There'd be the same financial costs uh, in terms of looking at renovating our current animal control building to keep these feral cats. And much like options two and three, there's the concern of disease transfer, physical hazards and increased training. Should all be considered as well for this option. So administration recommends option one, uh, status quo service level. Municipal enforcement would continue to enforce cats at large and take in all domesticated cats brought into protective services. This recommendation is reflected in the new proposed responsible pet ownership bylaw. The merits for this recommendation are due to the resources and staffing required for the options to deal with an issue. That is of lower risk to public safety and low service level requests for feral cats. The costs and resources required to implement this procedure may outweigh the benefits to public safety and the community.
So that concludes our presentation, so we're happy to take your questions.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, uh, Counselor Harris, you're first.
Um, really interesting uh, presentation. Um, I'm a strong proponent of doing away with animal licensing. Uh, I'm not a pet owner, but I respect the fact that there are many people in our community that love pets. They love. You know, their animals and and uh, it's it's just an important part of their lifestyle. Um, I did have occasion, and I don't know if other members of council are from this individual. Um, he has a a dog that, or they have a dog that was. Kept inside all the time and when they walk, it's on a leash, very responsible pet owner. Ended up with, I think it was a hundred and seventy dollar ticket. Is that ultimately what those tickets were for people that failed to license or re-license? How much was that?
Your worship through to Counselor Harris, it is a hundred and fifty dollar fine for an animal not being licensed.
Yeah, okay, so and he reached out to some of us, me in particular, and was quite uh, dismayed to to get a ticket like that. When their animal is definitely not an animal that would be uh, considered a problem. Um, and I and I, I guess I I can understand that, but I can also understand. The difficulty that your department has had in relation to administering this program and I'm a strong proponent of doing away with licensing. And I think the 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 time has probably arrived to probably take. Some of your recommendations and we'll be discussing that in due course, I guess. Um, in relation to the uh, responsible pet bylaw when that comes forward in October. Is that kind of where we see? The decision point on this particular thing?
Your worship through to Counselor Harris, yes, we will bring the responsible pet ownership back. Um, based on your feedback today with with the licensing required removed, if that's the direction that council is going.
Yeah, and I guess we'll have to have that discussion as a council because I know there's probably differences of opinion in that regard. Um, have we heard anything from Spruce Grove or Strathcona County relative to their? Um, how they're faring with their with the elimination of licensing, for example? In particular, dogs, cats are almost impossible, but dogs, uh, have have you gotten any kind of anecdotal? Information from them about their experience?
Your worship through to Counselor Harris, yes, I have spoken to um, to those communities and they say that they it's it's working well with the identification tag. Has really replaced the whole requirement for licensing and the use of social media and things are really working well in those communities.
So bottom line is, the benefit is we're able to use our bylaw enforcement peace officer program in a more appropriate and efficient manner.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Noyan.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Um, just uh, clarification on the last comment you made about the ID tags. Uh, would we have to pass a bylaw to have ID tags incorporate a a home phone number of of the owner? Is that? That would be something that's included if I'm just just wanted to, for clarity.
Your worship through to Counselor Noyan, yes, if. We had chosen to go down the road of uh, eliminating animal licensing, there would be. Specifics that have to be on that tag and they have to be kept up to date. Uh, an animal name, phone number, address, those are all things that could be made uh, mandatory to be on that tag.
Right, okay, thanks. Um, and then uh, just going back to twenty percent compliance on. Tickets issued for uh, non-renewal of of licenses. Is a two hundred and fifty dollar ticket um, was issued, what what ensures that we're collecting that? It seems like. It wouldn't happen two years in a row if somebody had to pay that. So is is that added to property taxes or or is or? Yeah, can anything be done to actually enforce the collection of that?
Your worship through to Counselor Noyan. That would, if a ticket goes unpaid, um, at that point in time, it would be going on to their. Their registration, basically. So if they go to renew their registration or update their driver's license, they would have to pay that fine at that time.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question on social.
I'll put you on round two. Okay, thank you, Counselor Blizzard.
Hi, thanks for the information. You know, I remember three years ago when we were doing our first budget this term. Mentioning, I don't know if it was in public or behind that, gee, I'd like to talk about lowering fees and I got poo-pooed by all of council. Saying absolutely not. We had long discussions last council before this. And now to see it going to possibly no fee is a. I don't know if that's impressive, but what a change. Um, and I guess that opens the eyes of other communities, try it and hey, maybe it'll work for us too. Um, I'm not sure. I am for having no fees. I mean, you do present some good uh, feedback on why we shouldn't. Um, first of all, the. So the ones that got these uh, tickets in the mail. You said they got four emails or letters, like, so if someone's crying going, gee, I got this ticket in the mail, they should have received them or? Do we know that they did? Maybe they didn't.
Your worship through to Counselor Blizzard, so the process starts in November, from November to February is when those notifications go out reminding. Pet owners to renew their license. And um, sometimes people have moved away from the community or they no longer have that pet. The pet has possibly passed away. So those are some of the reasons why they're not renewing. So that would be a small percentage of them and and others are just choosing. To not comply with that part of our bylaw.
So so the ones that would get a ticket if they don't pay, does that go under like renewing your license? Or is that not part of it? Cause it's just a city.
Your worship through to Council Blizzard, so what we do is um, we issue the the city municipal enforcement tag. Is first off, and they have twenty-one days to pay that ticket. And then we have the option to go to take that into a provincial ticket, to rewrite it as a provincial ticket. And then our officers have to go out and physically serve those violation tickets. And once it's in the provincial system, then if it goes unpaid, then it will roll over onto their registries um. And renewing of their license.
Okay, um, I've got a pile of questions here with feral cats after too. Um, do we feel there's gonna be more compliance with the ID tags or do we see that? Possibly being an issue, like, do you see everyone that didn't pay for the city is now gonna run out and some of these tags aren't cheap either to get one?
Your worship through to Council Blizzard, I I'm expecting that it is a little bit easier of a process. Most. Um, um, animals will typically have an ID tag on them, but that's that's the thing that we will we will analyze throughout the next year. If if this is what council chooses to do to make sure that we're seeing compliance with that.
Okay, I do have more questions, but I'll wait for round two and I'm gonna wait and see what everyone else is weighing in on.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Makin.
Thank you. Um, thanks for your presentation. So I I personally, I like license fees. I think that um, animal control does cost the city a lot of money and um, it is a way to offset that cost. Uh, however, it does, it has become a tax on the honest people. Enforcement is a challenge and I would. Beg to guess that well over, well over fifty percent of residents in Fort Saskatchewan have pets. And so the amount of compliance that we have here is extremely low and which tells me it's simply not working. So I certainly um, would support um, not having licenses going forward. And uh, I do like that what you've presented today um, as alternatives is to where. Um, municipal enforcement would use their time and better suited using their time. So I would support that. Um, on the feral cats, I know you're looking for kind of feedback to come back to you, so. I guess I would say based on what you presented today and the limited amount, I would be in favor of the status quo on that one. Um, the buddy program is interesting. Is there examples that you have of municipalities that do that? Where the buddy program has been successful or it's just something that we've heard that could could work?
Your worship through to Counselor Makin, I'm not sure of any specific municipalities, but I do know that um, there are a number of rescues and shelters. That we are partnered with or who we have been partnered with in the past that use this program. Um, EHS for one uh, uses this program. Also Gears uh, out of Edmonton uses this program as well. Um, I'm not sure of any municipalities that specifically do, but.
Yeah, so I guess I would say that from like the training that's needed and the renovations that's needed with the. Low amount of feral cats that have been reported. Um, I'd love to hear from other members, but uh, at this point, I would think that we wouldn't need. That that wouldn't be necessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Abatoye.
Thank you. Um, thank you for your presentation. Uh, so my first question is a mathematical question because the the numbers are just not really making sense to me, so. If you go to your graph where you have the total numbers of licenses. Um, for so for twenty twenty-three, you have, yeah, that one, you have three hundred and three, three thousand one seventy-three licenses sold for twenty-three. And one and twelve hundred for twenty-four. But when you go to the revenues, can we just go to the previous graph? When you go to the revenue, the delta is so small and I'm just wondering what. What's the difference? It's like, why, why is it so small? You go, what I mean, the the difference in the numbers sold is so wide, but the revenue is so close. So I'm wondering, are we? Like, what are we getting a lot a lot more in in fines? Like, why is this so close?
Um, your worship through to Counselor Abatoye, I I think it's just because it's partway through the year. It's a timeline of when the reports were, the numbers were were gathered for the reporting system, so that's that's what that looks like right now.
Yeah, cause just.
It's just the timing of the reporting, yeah.
Okay, makes sense.
And the fact that we're not at the end of the year yet.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. So the mathematician, we just wouldn't let it go, sorry. Okay, um, so. My other question is um, regarding um. So regarding this licensing thing, I. Actually sit on the fence on this, on whether we should eliminate it or not, but more so because this is gonna be such a tough budget year. Losing revenue, I don't think this is a time to lose any form of revenue, to be honest. Um, so I don't know if I really support it, um, support taking out, taking off a licensing. Um, I I agree with the ideology, you know, it's not working on all of those things, but I just think that this is not the year to take out that revenue. Because we need, we need every form of revenue we can get, especially in this budget year. Um, but my other question is, what, because we're still gonna, there's still gonna be fines for people who don't comply with the responsible pet ownership. Do we have projected um, revenue from that? What, do we have an idea what that may look like?
Your worship through to Counselor Abatoye, so we have increased some of the fines within the responsible pet ownership bylaw that's coming back in on October the eighth. However, we still do take that educational approach to um, getting voluntary compliance with our bylaws. So I I do anticipate that our fine revenue will increase just because we'll be changing a bit of our our focus. But I don't anticipate it being as high as what the revenue is on licensing really. Because we still will be taking that that educational approach. Um, typically officers do education and then on a second offense would issue a fine. So we will definitely see our revenues from fines go up, but it likely will not meet what the licensing is is providing.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I have one more question, but.
I'll put you on the list. Okay, I'm next in the speaking order. Um, and I am conscious of the time, but we will. We will try and finish this one up before we break for our presentation. Um, so the question that I have is if we were to eliminate the licenses and to ensure people get their tags. Um, as the offices are out out and about, will they actually stop people to see if they have their tags? And B, would we be increasing the fines so that if they're non-compliant, it would get them to be compliant?
Your worship, so yes, anytime that we deal with an animal out in the public, we are checking for licensing. Um, if licensing. Went by the wayside, we'd be looking for tags. Um, and we would be enforcing that. Um, it is an increase in fines in the new uh, proposed responsible pet ownership bylaw, I believe.
Significantly.
I'm not a, I'm not a hundred percent on the exact.
That's okay. Your worship through to count or through to your worship, I always do that. Um, I think that we have a hundred and fifty dollars is the fine, so if they're not wearing the tag, we're proposing a hundred and fifty dollar fine. If they're not having the tag on it on there, similar to what not having a license would be, is we were keeping that fine the same.
Okay, thanks. And with regards to feral cats, I have a daughter who lives on a farm. They don't like cats being dropped off. They wouldn't want anybody's cats, even as part of a program. I can guarantee you that. They have enough trouble spaying neutering all the ones they have and then they end up with other people's cats at their house. That they don't have and then they have to look after them, but the whole point being is a lot of them just become coyote food. Because they are just in the in the woods and stuff like that. So um. You know, when it comes to feral cats, um. It would be cruel to say, but it would be uh, interesting that if if people could deal with them themselves, like in. I'm gonna say in the old days when you lived on the farm. Now be careful because when you live down the farm, if there was cats, they threw them in a bag and threw them in the river or they just. Put them on the exhaust pipe, so uh, that's how they. It's okay, I grew up on a farm. I knew what happened back then and and there wasn't a lot of emotion tied to it. We. People just dealt with with cats that showed up unwanted, so for all the city people, that's the reality. Of living on a farm, just FYI. I hope that doesn't get captured anywhere as being the mean mayor. Um, so anyway, uh, I would be okay with status quo, but uh, I think there are options if if they are caught and can't be dealt with. Okay, Counselor Kelly, you're next.
Um, thank you. This wasn't the way I was going to start, but I have to respond to Mary Catcher's comments and how some of my fellow counselors reacted. Um, it is simply a fact of life. The fact you haven't heard of it doesn't change it, it is a fact of life. The next time you unwrap your steak and throw it on the barbecue. Take a minute and ponder where that steak come from. Just do it. I I personally have toured packing plants, so I have a complete understanding of how it works and I like the steak, but it. So anyway, it is life and we should just acknowledge that. The licensing, I'm not gonna go, not gonna waste a lot of time. I I I prefer getting rid of it, increasing fines, increase fines so that it makes some sense. First infraction, I have no problem with a warning. Second infraction should be meaningful. Not gentle, meaningful. Um, there's no sense wasting time. That's what costs us some money. Um, the feral cat thing, I'm gonna gag everybody out. This is why I'm a supporter of a feral cat bylaw. In my backyard during COVID, I was mowing the lawn, I noticed a baby rabbit running around. My stepson was coming over to help me construct the shed that afternoon and I phoned him and I said, please be careful. Make sure your dog's on a leash because we've got a baby rabbit in the yard. We were careful. Three hours later, we noticed nothing, so we turned the dog loose. Within five minutes, the dog sniffing something behind a tree. But there we found a dead baby rabbit. With the back of his skull ripped off, no weather repair and damage and the brain eaten. So when you Google that, Google tells me that it's not likely a feral cat, it's a house cat. House cats are fed, they're not hungry, but they continue to eat. And they continue to hunt. So when they hunt and they kill game, they eat the choicest parts and then they go on to hunt something different. So when they hunt and they kill game, they eat the choicest parts, and then they go on to hunt something different. So I'm gonna leave it at that. That's what I've lived with. I've got another baby rabbit injured in my yard this year. Now, I've never seen a cat run around. I firmly believe cats are night creatures, and they tend to do most of their prowling if in fact they're out at nighttime. I think there's a lot of home orders still that in this community, because it's just, it's a societal thing. Um we all grew up on a farm, or a great deal of us did, and at that time it was accepted practice that when bedtime came, you opened the door and you punted the cat outside. And I think there's a significant number of cat owners that still do that, but we don't live on the farm anymore. We live in an urban setting. Personally, I would think that everybody in this council, and in fact, everybody in this room, should value our native fauna much higher than a wild or illegally at loose cat. I know I do. We live in an urban environment, our native fauna is struggling to survive. I cannot describe how many birds' nests I've found destroyed in my yard. I never see any action, I never hear any noise. The birds are gone and there's a mess. So I'm going on to the wild market catcher, stop, I can stop me when you need, but I'm on a roll. The chart that you said cat at large versus feral made me chuckle. Three feral cats out of all the complaints. Do you really think the people, when they noticed a cat in their yard, walked out and asked them whether or not he was a feral cat or not? They wouldn't know, and it's impossible to know till you try to handle the cat. And then it becomes very obvious very quickly what you're dealing with. Until that point in time, it's a cat at large. And I know cats at large kill animals in my yard. Therefore, they're all feral. If they're not in the house where they belong, or on a leash where they belong, they're feral because they act feral, period. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just before I go on to round two, I've got magpies that killed our baby bunny. There was three of them that came in and killed it, so they're bad too. I'd like to, yeah, it's okay. Uh going on to round two, um I had you on there, are you off now? Oh, they're, oh, sorry. Okay, I had you first. Okay, uh councillor Neuan.
Yeah, I guess uh just on the, on the comments that have been made, uh I I think you would need a fairly good understanding of our ecology, biology in Fort Saskatchewan, an ecosystem as a whole to to say that cats are actually doing, our city of Edmonton has a massive rabbit problem, and magpies and crows are an issue, so I I don't, I don't quite see uh the the merits of that optic of it. However, I guess just to offer and to weigh in on on this myself one quick question first, for feral cats, how do we come up with a budget of ten to fifteen thousand dollars if if there's only been three a year on rolling average, and it costs two hundred or three hundred dollars, let's say uh to 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 neuter or spay them, so what what does that budget comprise of exactly?
Your worship through to councillor Neuan, that is, we are expecting an increase potentially in calls for service. Because it's not a service we we offer at this time, so there may be residents experiencing feral cats or cats at large that are not calling them in potentially, as it's not a service that we currently provide. So we're anticipating if that is a service we begin to provide, that there may be an increase uh in calls for service for that.
Okay, and it's better to budget higher than.
And we, we've based that number on twenty-five, twenty-five cats coming into our care that we would then um euthanize, so that was, that's what we came up with that number.
Right, okay, yeah, yeah, appreciate that. Then on the animal licensing, yeah, I I would also agree with uh okay, with the warning system, if if somebody isn't complying, if we do change it to uh just a a tag being issued as I I I think that's fair, there's gonna be an education period, it's gonna be different for people. Uh but a- a- as for now, I would side with that, I think there is a a cost or a a cost benefit to to that approach, uh given that you can use that, uh the allocation of of those funds, I think it's around fifty, fifty-four, fifty-six thousand dollars, something like that to to other resources, so so I'd I'd be supportive of that and and potentially looking at higher fines for a, for a second offense, let's say if you're caught without a a tag and a phone number on it, so that's my.
Okay, thank you, councillor Blizzard. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um I'm gonna stick with the animal or the uh pet side of it for now, not the feral cats. Um so I'm gonna assume that uh the ID tags are on the owner of the animal and that even on a harness or something would be a fine?
Your worship through to councillor Blizzard, yes, the tag would be attached to the the animal itself, either on a a collar or a harness.
Because I've come across walking someone that's got, you know, the name Charlie, and then the phone number, that's okay.
Correct.
As long as it's on.
Something along those lines.
They're wearing, okay. Um I'm in agreement that fines need to be higher. Um when we do um come across someone, if you come across somebody and you talk to them, do you get the family name, um and then their address, where they are, so that you have record for future? Because I think when we do a fine, it should be, if they have five pets and little Charlie gets out, um and then the next day, the other dog gets out and also doesn't have a tag that family, that should be the second incident, right? Is that what would happen?
Your worship through to councillor Blizzard, correct, every animal that's licensed uh is linked to an owner. So we're always asking for that owner's information, because they're the ones technically in violation as the owner of the animal. Uh so anytime we deal with them, whether it be dog number one, two, or three, uh it would be considered dog one, first offense, and it was dog two the next time, that's technically offense two.
Okay, but we're not gonna have them tied to, because they're not licensed if this goes through, so we will just ask for their information?
Correct, we ask for information anytime we deal with someone.
Okay, so as long as you, I mean, it's, people are out for a walk, don't have a tag, they may not have ID on them.
Correct, we're able to look up uh identification.
Okay.
Regardless if they have that ID or not.
Okay, um guess that's it for, and now feral cats. To me, it's pricey, three cats a year, I know you're guestimating more, but um you also mentioned that feral cats are kind of territorial, so by having some, it keeps others out, so I just can't see that it's gonna go way up, but it seems pricey to say it's gonna cost fifteen thousand for dealing with a handful of cats, um so I think the policy as is would be fine. But what happens right now? So someone calls in, I call in, I've had this cat and it's sitting on my fence, and I can tell it's pretty wild, you know, but how do you know? So if I say, tell you it's a feral cat, you just say, sorry, we don't come, good luck?
Your worship through to councillor Blizzard, we ask a number of questions uh to the reporting party to try and determine if that cat is presenting as feral. Um if they have it in a trap, we'll even do a home visit to assess the animal ourselves. And if it's determined that we believe that cat is a feral cat, uh it's not taken into our facility and it's released on site where it is.
So you would just take, like if they've borrowed a trap, you'd say, sorry, you gotta let it go?
Correct, we can't, we can't.
Or they have to deal with it?
Yes, they could either deal with it how they wish to, or they'd be releasing it, and we would then be taking the cat back.
Okay, um I think I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Abatoye.
Okay, thank you. Um so just coming to the subject of feral cats. Um option one, you say um maintain current service level. So why are we um recommending a fifteen thousand dollar um budgets request for twenty twenty-five if we're not increasing service level?
Your worship through to councillor Abatoye, in order to maintain that service level, we're, we're trying to, one of the biggest challenges that we're having is that the rescues agencies will not take our cats from us, and so sometimes we have to completely not take any cats, so we would like to secure um a contract with a rescue agency to secure five or ten spots a year that cats could go to, and so that's just maintaining our current service level is what we're looking at there. We're also, in order to just enhance this, so that we can deal with cats a little bit better as well is through our fees and charges, we currently charge fifty dollars for the cat trap. We would make it a free, a free fee, just to help our residents if they need to to get help with the cats deterrent in their, in their yards.
Okay, so coming to options two and three, that's all us actually dealing with it, and the costs the cost comes to the same fifteen, ten to fifteen thousand. So why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we go ahead with that option if it's still gonna cost us the same thing as doing, as maintaining the current service level?
Your worship through to councillor Abatoye, that's why we're not recommending those options, they are options, they do come with costs. If we were to, uh if council chose to, that one of those would be a service level, they would want us to pursue. We would have to do more um investigating and research into the costs, because we do have animal kennel renovations that we need to be done, and those are estimates based on twenty-five cats.
Okay, so.
For all of those options.
Okay, so the cost you've recommended for options two and three are not, they're they're just for the research or, you know, it's not the actual cost that it would?
It is the actual cost for about twenty-five cats is what we've estimated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Kelly, and then we're going to get to go in camera so we can uh deal with our guests, so councillor Kelly, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about the current service level. Because the current service level is not actually what the city has been providing. We don't historically haven't held cats. In fact, you haven't accepted cats into your facility now for 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 a while, is that correct? Says here twenty-two and twenty-three, part of twenty-three, we were not accepting cats due to capacity. My recollection personally is it's a much larger period than that. My recollection also is that I didn't learn this when I was on council, that I was told that in the community. So if in fact the community believes the city isn't handling the cats, why would anybody bother trying to get a trap? It's a waste of time, and if I trap a feral cat, by the way, I gotta let it go. I mean, it's the most ridiculous statement I've ever heard, and no offense, sir, I get your predicament, I, in spades, I get your predicament. The societal image of that is ridiculous. I'm gonna leave it at that. I I I think I'm an outlier on the council, but to to suggest that we don't have a problem is ridiculous. To suggest we don't wanna deal with it because we're gonna hurt our feelings, pardon me, is ridiculous. If if in fact it's a psychological damage to a staff member, get another staff member. And if you have a trouble getting a staff member, I will give you my phone number. I volunteer, okay? And I'll leave it at that. It's 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 passion to me, I think this council needs to deal with it, it's not a huge expense and burying our head in the sand going forward, based upon some parameter that we don't have a shelter, so we're not gonna deal with the problem, is ridiculous. And some community in the area has to take the lead. I know it's a problem. I will send anybody lots of articles on it, it's rather, some of them are rather graphic, Bergit, you might enjoy them. Anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, folks. A good report, by the way.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much, so hopefully there's a few takeaways from this that you can bring your report in October and oh, okay, all right, thank you, I'll just finish up with them, so thank you very much for being here today and and uh providing this information and allowing council to have some comments. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, councillor Harris.
Uh I would move, we move into in camera uh as required under the FOIP legislation.
And this one is for just the EIA, because we'll come back out right after.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Uh motion is accepted to go on camera. Soon as it comes up, please cast your vote. Mine's not coming up. Okay, all right, so we'll go on camera and you can, thank you.
Okay, I will call the meeting back to order. We had our, the only motion that was passed upstairs was to return to open, so we are back in open council. And we'll start with the next item, which is utilities growth plan. We have Sadie Miller and Bradley McDonald.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, your worshiping council. My name is Sadie Miller, Director of the Utilities and Sustainability Department. And supporting me today is Brad McDonald, our manager of utility operations. We're here to present an overview of the 2025 to 2029 Utilities Growth Plan. The Utilities Growth Plan is a multi-year approach to bring water and sewer utility staff and equipment to levels that meet our community growth demands. This plan was created to ensure a timely and coordinated approach to increasing equipment and staff capacity over the next five years. Historical growth in utility assets from 2013 is shown here. Fort Saskatchewan continues to grow, and this results in an increase to the number of assets that utility staff installs and maintains. Every new utility account that gets opened is tied to a series of new assets and appointments. Every new street or neighborhood brings more block valves, hydrants, and sewer lines that require ongoing preventative maintenance. And every new building, such as reservoirs and lift stations, contain numerous components that need to be carefully monitored on a regular basis. Each asset referenced in the Utilities Growth Plan document carries a series of responsibilities and time-sensitive tasks that the utility team is responsible for. One critical task that our operators oversee is the installation of new water meters, as well as the repair and replacement of existing meters. This chart from the Utilities Growth Plan shows the annual increase in water meter appointments since 2021. Newly constructed homes require a water meter to be installed in a timely manner. And administration has projected resource needs to accommodate this forecasted growth in assets over the next five years. In terms of current field staffing levels, the utility operations team consists of one foreman and five operators. Based on Fort Saskatchewan's current population, this translates to 0.2 staff per 1,000 people. When we look at our regional counterparts that provide similar services and oversee comparable networks of infrastructure, Fort Saskatchewan is 30% below the average staff-to-resident ratio. To service this growth and meet changing demands, several operational functions will require attention. These include the team's overall capacity to address unplanned requests, repairs, and maintenance of utility assets and infrastructure, sustainment of our preventative maintenance programs, and system-wide SCADA upgrades to increase overall security and operational efficiency. These priorities have culminated in a series of staffing, equipment, and budget adjustment recommendations spanning five years. Year one of the Growth Plan is 2025. Operational recommendations include adjustments to contracted services and supplies budgets, an additional full-time utility operator, and compensation adjustments for utility operators that incentivize continued growth. Capital recommendations include a truck to complement the new operator position, as well as a system-wide SCADA upgrade. Year two of the plan recommends a one-time budget for consulting services to ensure our unidirectional flushing program remains effective as our community continues to grow. A temporary seasonal laborer and associated rental vehicle, as well as the purchase of an additional truck. Year three recommends the purchase of two backhoe attachments, a tamper plate and a breaker. Year four recommends an additional temporary seasonal laborer. And year five recommends an additional permanent full-time utility operator and a purpose-built van for water meter appointments, as well as a one-time budget for consulting services to ensure the SCADA system remains relevant. The overall operating impact of the Utilities Growth Plan is about $454,000 over five years, with an additional $40,000 in one-time costs. The overall capital impact of the Growth Plan is about $417,000. That concludes my summary of the document and the presentation, and we welcome any questions council may have.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'll open it up.
House report at the police.
Okay, I will call the meeting back to order. We had our. The only motion that was passed upstairs was to return to open, so we are back in open council. And we'll start with the next item, which is utilities growth plan. We have Sadie Miller and Bradley McDonald. Welcome.
Good afternoon, your worshiping council. My name is Sadie Miller, Director of the Utilities and Sustainability Department. And supporting me today is Brad McDonald, our manager of utility operations. We're here to present an overview of the 2025 to 2029 Utilities Growth Plan. The Utilities Growth Plan is a multi-year approach to bring water and sewer utility staff and equipment to levels that meet our community growth demands. This plan was created to ensure a timely and coordinated approach to increasing equipment and staff capacity over the next five years. Historical growth in utility assets from 2013 is shown here. Fort Saskatchewan continues to grow, and this results in an increase to the number of assets that utility staff installs and maintains. Every new utility account that gets opened is tied to a series of new assets and appointments. Every new street or neighborhood brings more block valves, hydrants, and sewer lines that require ongoing preventative maintenance. And every new building, such as reservoirs and lift stations, contain numerous components that need to be carefully monitored on a regular basis. Each asset referenced in the Utilities Growth Plan document carries a series of responsibilities and time-sensitive tasks that the utility team is responsible for. One critical task that our operators oversee is the installation of new water meters, as well as the repair and replacement of existing meters. This chart from the Utilities Growth Plan shows the annual increase in water meter appointments since 2021. Newly constructed homes require a water meter to be installed in a timely manner. And administration has projected resource needs to accommodate this forecasted growth in assets over the next five years. In terms of current field staffing levels, the utility operations team consists of one foreman and five operators. Based on Fort Saskatchewan's current population, this translates to point two staff per 1,000 people. When we look at our regional counterparts that provide similar services and oversee comparable networks of infrastructure, Fort Saskatchewan is 30% below the average staff-to-resident ratio. To service this growth and meet changing demands, several operational functions will require attention. These include the team's overall capacity to address unplanned requests, repairs, and maintenance of utility assets and infrastructure, sustainment of our preventative maintenance programs, and system-wide SCADA upgrades to increase overall security and operational efficiency. These priorities have culminated in a series of staffing, equipment, and budget adjustment recommendations spanning five years. Year one of the growth plan is 2025. Operational recommendations include adjustments to contracted services and supplies budgets, an additional full-time utility operator, and compensation adjustments for utility operators that incentivize continued growth. Capital recommendations include a truck to complement the new operator position, as well as a system-wide SCADA upgrade. Year two of the plan recommends a one-time budget for consulting services to ensure our unidirectional flushing program remains effective as our as our community continues to grow. A temporary seasonal laborer and associated rental vehicle, as well as the purchase of an additional truck. Year three recommends the purchase of two backhoe attachments, a tamper plate and a breaker. Year four recommends an additional temporary seasonal laborer. And year five recommends an additional permanent full-time utility operator and a purpose-built van for water meter appointments, as well as a one-time budget for consulting services to ensure the SCADA system remains relevant. The overall operating impact of the Utilities Growth Plan is about $454,000 over five years, with an additional $40,000 in one-time costs. The overall capital impact of the growth plan is about $417,000. That concludes my summary of the document and the presentation, and we welcome any questions council may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'll open it up for questions. Counselor Kelly, you're first.
Thank you to the two of you. I thought a good and interesting report. I. One question, page 60 of our material, so let me find that. And then I'll guide you to the page you're looking for or on your report. Page four. Growth in utility accounts and assets. What I didn't see there for comparison's sake is how the utility staffing grew over those, that 10-year period as well. I'm sure there must have been some changes. What were they in terms of full-time equivalents?
Through your worship to Counselor Kelly, we did do this analysis, although historical budgeting practices made it a little bit different, difficult to compare apples to apples. I do have a summary of our FTE count though.
Tell you what, well, you can send it to us by email too if it's easier. I don't care. You're prepared? I'm fine. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
You can go ahead. Okay, so we, in 2008, so I'm going to start a little bit earlier, we had three permanent FTE operators and a point-five FTE foreman. We added one permanent full-time operator in 2009. In 2017, we adjusted the point-five FTE foreman to be a full one FTE foreman. So a point-five FTE increase for that foreman position. And then in 2019, we added one additional utility operator.
So over those years, if my quick scribbles are right, starting in 09, not 08, 09, two and a half full-time equivalents, including a wait, three full-time equivalents. Does that make sense?
Through your worship, can you repeat that?
You gave us numbers starting in 2008.
Yes, we had one FTE added in 2009. A point-five FTE added in 2017, and one FTE added in 2019.
Okay, so two and a half FTEs added essentially over the period you're pointing out here.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Good, thank you.
You're good. Counselor Abatoye.
Thank you for your presentation. So I understand the need for, you know, having this plan because, I mean, we're expecting significant growth within the city. But my question is that what is the expected impact on utility rates to residents? And what's that going to look like for the next five years of this growth plan?
Through your worship to Counselor Abatoye, we haven't mapped that out specifically yet. There's a lot of variables that impact the rate. And when we sat down and looked at just this FTE and the resource ask, it felt like an oversimplification, and we couldn't guarantee that those numbers would be accurate come that specific budget year. So of course, we are prepared for, or we will be prepared by November for the 2025 budget. But different direct and indirect variables do impact that rate, so.
So, so just a follow-up. So are we expecting to see a significant increase? So what are we? Like, I know that you don't have the numbers, but are we, are we saying the 50% increase in utility? Because that's the source of, that's the source of funding for this ask, right? So obviously with utility rates, so is it minimal? Is it substantial? Like, what, what is the projection? And I don't, I don't need a number. You can just.
Through your worship, the last percentage that I saw on our utility model was around 13%, but that includes increases from the wastewater commission. That includes inflationary charges. All of the 2025 asks from the growth plan, yeah.
Okay, so 13%.
Yes, and that's utilities as a whole, so still working on those numbers.
And that's over the next five years or just over the next one year?
One year.
One year. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Harris.
Brad, with the need for qualified operator, how are we finding the labor pool for level two and level three operators? Are we challenged to find qualified staff to fill those positions?
Through your worship, I would say modestly challenged. I wouldn't say it's a great challenge. We did manage to recruit and fill for two. I wouldn't call them entry-level positions this year. I would call them intermediate positions. And we did have a enough candidate pool that we were able to select to that we were, felt were a good fit. Aside from the growth plan, Human Resources is currently reviewing the utilities, job descriptions, and compensation to see how we are in alignment with other municipalities. And if we remain competitive based on what our qualifications that we're asking for compared to what we're compensating. And I believe that's going to likely be the subject of another discussion, but depending on the outcome of that, that may influence our ability to recruit.
So the program for training is operated through NATE and SATE or just NATE?
Yeah, primarily, operators will come into this industry through a technical school such as NATE. It provides a basically a head start. We have had operators basically start from the ground up. It takes a little longer. You have to do a lot more homework and be dedicated. But yeah, generally speaking, the NATE technical program is, is, is how people are introduced.
And last question, would we be considered to be an employer of choice from that standpoint in this area?
It's a, it's a competitive, it's a competitive region, especially when you're sitting next to Epcot. I'll be honest, Epcot is a, is the elephant in the room. I would say that based on our recruitment experience this year, we were, we were able to successfully fill those two vacancies, so. I would say that speaks well.
Good, thanks.
Thanks. I'm next in speaking order. So a couple of questions. So from your 2008 to now, and you talk about what your staffing is, did you also take into consideration how we've transitioned from operators going out and reading water meters as to having the radio read now?
Your worship, I believe we were able to absorb a lot of our growth in recent years because of that efficiency that was realized.
Okay, and I appreciate that. So the other question that I have, anytime somebody says you're comparing another municipality to our municipality for the complement, I guess the question that I have is how many other municipality have the radio wave collection of, for water meter reading? So if you, I just want to make sure that when you're providing those statistics, it's apples to apples.
Through your worship, through your worship, I would, the best comparator is Laduke. Laduke has a very similar. They use actually almost identical system as we do. And that was one of the comparators within that study. Within that, there, yeah, it is fair to say that there are some that are still doing an older format of meter reading, and that may influence that as well, which is fair. But Laduke is a fair comparator.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Just before I go on, I will say, by the way, congratulations on, on your recycling award too. That's your department that received that. So I saw that on Facebook or, or LinkedIn, so congratulations on that. And just anything that we're talking about today will come forward at budget time. So just because we see the plan doesn't mean that it's being accepted. It means will give us something to ponder. So Counselor Kelly on round two.
Thank you. Likewise, with vehicles or trucks, how many trucks do we currently have? And I assume all of the new ones you're talking in here are additions to the fleet, not replacement?
Through your worship to Counselor Kelly, yes, that is accurate. The vehicles in the request would be additional. The current number of vehicles that we have currently is five. Plus the one at the transfer station. And then to accommodate seasonal staff, we will use rental vehicles. So that you've tied the temporary person to a temporary vehicle.
So that's essentially, we're close to one vehicle per staff member. Does that make sense?
Yes, we're with, if, like, if you're looking for a one-to-one ratio, we're one truck deficient.
And I was going to wait till budget time, but I thought I would plant the seed now. What type of truck do we buy that we need to spend our budget $90,000 for a half-ton? Flesh that out for me a bit.
Yeah, through your worship. So the number, the placeholder number in the growth plan is provided through fleet and facilities, so they are much more in tune with what the current cost of a vehicle is. What we specified would be a half-ton four-wheel-drive pickup truck. The reason that a half-ton was specified is that particular configuration gives you the most options when you actually go to purchase it. So if you require an eight-foot box, you require a half-ton. The smaller vehicles simply don't have the bigger box capacity. And the nature of the work that they do, it's typically, you don't have a large crew of people going to a site. You have one or two individuals. You don't need the larger cab, the cabin space. You need the bulk material kind of space, the cargo space. So the, the half-ton configuration just gives you those options. And then our intention would be at the year that we request a vehicle, that we've done a more detailed analysis of what the true needs are. And, and if there's an opportunity to say, okay, you know what, like, we're actually comfortable with the number of half-ton type vehicles that we have, in this case, we may actually be better suited by an SUV or a quarter-ton type truck. Then at the time of that budget, you can ask for a smaller vehicle. It's, it's much easier to reduce your budget request. But given that these are potentially two, three, five years old, we felt it's better to put the placeholder in for the flexibility.
Okay, I think the first one's going to be on the budget for 2025 at $90,000. At the beginning of your comments, you said, I don't pick the number, somebody else gives it to me. Who should I be directing that question to come budget time, Brad?
So I would recommend that the budget go to fleet and facilities.
Sorry?
I would recommend that go through fleet and facilities.
Will do, thank you.
So what I would recommend is you give them heads up that that will be asked, because that will come through as your request, and they should be there to address it. Okay? All right, so that looks like all the questions for that one. So we will move on to the next item, water tower refurbishment. And we've got Brad McDonald presenting. Thank you.
Good afternoon again, your worship and members of council. My name again is Bradley McDonald. I'm the manager of utility operations. And today we will be going through an overview of the condition assessments that were completed for the water tower.
A look at some, thank you, a look at some recommendations for what to do with that tower in the future, and a preview of the capital budget. So as a background, the water tower was constructed in 1956, making it approximately 70 years old. It was a major overhaul in the mid-'90s where it gained the mural and color scheme that has become somewhat iconic to the community. And conditions and assessments were completed in 2016 and 2023. It's important to understand what the tower does and why we have it, why we still use it, and that helps to understand what we need to do next. So as a quick overview of what the tower does, it provides stable pressure to the distribution system through gravity. In a simple sense, imagine a pump running at 100 liters per second, but the community demand might only be 80 liters per second at that given moment. That surplus water that the pump is producing will go into the tower and store there and provide pressure back. As people start to wake up in the day and that demand increases, now maybe you're at 120 liters per second, and it exceeds what the pump can supply, the water will start to come out of the tower. So it provides that buffering capacity so that your pump can operate at a steady state. And then the pump is triggered on and off based on the volume and level of water in the tower. So the tower does continue to provide a useful and functional role within our distribution system. In that sense that the tower, the technology in the tower is not obsolete per se, the tower still functions. The concept and theory behind the tower is still valid. Where our tower runs into challenges is the size of the tower. Throughout, as, as the city grows, the number of times that that tower fills and empties and fills and empties in a day starts to increase, and the value that the tower adds will gradually diminish. Getting into the assessment of the structure, so it is a 70-year-old steel structure, and, and we expect that it's not going to be in mint condition. But it's important to understand if the tower remains in sound condition and something that could be invested in should you choose to. Or has it become a liability and is it something that's unsafe? These are important questions. So in 2016 and again in 2013, 2023, we did a number of visual inspections, non-destructive metal testing, coating analysis, and structural analysis. And that work came back and showed that the tower actually is in good condition, has a long useful life ahead of it. But it does need some maintenance and renewal. So some of the key things that we need to invest in that tower is the coating. The coating serves to protect the metal, and that is one of the most fundamental things that you can do to prolong the life of the tower. What we found was that most of the coating that you see, especially like the blue paint, has oxidized. It's got that chalky look to it. It's starting to wear. And there's places where it's, it's allowed the corrosion to come through. The corrosion is generally superficial. It's not anything that we need to be alarmed about at this time. But it is something we need to take action on in order to prevent it from becoming critical. The, the most concerning part that we found was the column underneath the insulation. Just because you're, you're trapping condensation and moisture in that environment, we found that had shown the most corrosion and the most need for some work. And we recommend doing this in a very short period of time to prevent damage. We looked at the interior of the tank and the mechanical systems of the tower. Generally speaking, again, it is in good condition, but we found that the interior coating is also aging and nearing the end of its useful life. There are also mechanical components, such as this, the pipe that lifts the hot water into the tank to help reduce freezing, has become corroded and would need repair, along with other minor issues inside. As well, a recommendation, if we were going to keep the tower in service, we would want to introduce a mixing system to ensure that the water remains fresh, reduces frost buildup and things like this. So if we want to keep the tower in service, there is interior investments required as well. We did consider alternatives. What if we took the tower out of service? If we took the tower out of service, we would need to replace that buffering function and the pressure function that it provides, which would trigger projects at the West Park Reservoir in order to, to replace that functionality. We would also need to replace the communication tower role that that tower has. It's a, it's the tallest, you know, freestanding structure in town, so to speak. It is a useful and valuable asset in that regard. And we would require to replace that because the city itself uses that as part of our radio communication system, and including the meter program that we discussed earlier. Other options would be to maintain the tower in a decommissioned state, so essentially an empty tank, but it would preserve its landmark value and it would preserve its communications tower value. And thirdly, we could keep the tower in service as a functioning water tower indefinitely if we so choose to. After considering a number of factors and budgets and, and a whole array of considerations, what we recommend is to maximize the life of the infrastructure that we have. We, the, the tower has sufficient life to maintain it in service for a few more years. And by the time we really push the end of the life of the inside of that tower, West Park will naturally be coming due for work. And in that same time period, we anticipate that more storage and reservoir pumping house capacity will be built on the south side of town. And so that becomes an opportunity to say, there's work that we need to do anyway. At that time, that makes sense to do the tower as a decommissioning. Putting investment into the tower will not defer those projects. They have to be done. Doing those projects when they're due anyway reduces the amount of reduces the amount of investment that we have to put into the water tower. So there's, there is some economics in that. We also believe that the, the community appreciates and values this asset, and that there is inherent value in just preserving the structure of the tower, even if it's taken out of service. And when you look at the option to replace it with a communication tower, the amount of investment you need to put into that starts to become quite equitable to the investment we need to put into this structure regardless. So we feel that we maximize our value by keeping it in service for a few more years, do work on the exterior of the tank, defer some of the work on the inside of the tank, decommission it when West Park becomes due. And with that, I will open it up to questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. Counselor Kelly, you're first.
Thank you. I, I thought a great report, you guys. It literally answered all of my questions. But I'd just like to flesh out one, Brad, a little bit. In fact, the only question I had was, what about if we have a, a, a power outage and, and we need to pump water to a fire truck or have hydrant pressure at a water truck? As the city grows, would that water tower actually provide enough pressure to get fire hydrant pressure to the south edge of Fort Saskatchewan? Would it still accomplish that?
Yes, through your worship, to a limited extent, the tower would provide a, a bridge between the time the power failed and the generator started at the pump station. So in the event of a power outage, you are going to have a delay. The pump will stop. The generator will start, the pump will restart. There will be a lag. That tower will hold pressure during that lag.
Well, I just learned something. We have generators at both reservoirs or just the West Park one?
For clarity, the, there's a, an electric generator at main reservoir that would continue to run the pumps. At West Park, there's a engine-driven pump, so it would trigger, it, it's a diesel-driven mechanical pump, and it would trigger in the event of a power failure.
So in your opinion, in a power outage, we would, Fort Saskatchewan, let's say we had a worst-case scenario of forty years ago, and we lose power for three days in a blizzard in the middle of winter, it's your opinion that without the water tower, we would still have, we would still have a water pressure to, to, to at least make coffee in the morning?
I, I will caveat that the, that the tower will provide a buffer until backup systems initiate. If those backup, if we had a more catastrophic failure and the, the backup generator or the engine-driven pumps didn't ignite or fire up, there would likely only be one to two hours of water in the tower. So the, the, the limited storage capacity of the tower is, is really its, its downside. And it will, it'll bridge gaps, but it won't sustain, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Makin?
I apologize, I'm actually good. I reread a sentence and answered my question.
Okay, good. Thank you. Counselor Harris?
Brad, can you refresh my memory? What is the kind of static pressure we try to maintain in our system overall, which obviously would be a combination of head from, from height and pumped head? What are we trying to maintain?
The goal pressure, I would say, is about fifty-five PSI. And you'll fluctuate anywhere from about fifty to sixty, depending on time of day and where you are in town.
Okay, so we don't have situation like they do, hairy chills in, in Sherwood Park. Ultimately, one time they had a real problem maintaining pressure because of the height of land. So we're pretty flat, so that's pretty good that way?
Yeah, geographically, that benefits us, yes.
Okay, good, thanks.
Go ahead, Counselor Abatoye.
I'm just thinking more on the liability side. If we kept the tank as a landmark, like, would the city face any form of liability? Well, I guess insurance will cover that, right? So.
Yes, through your worship, I do believe that that is, is fair to say that the insurance, it would, we currently have insurance for the water tower, we would maintain that insurance. The the liability would be very similar to the liability that we have now in that you would still have to do periodic maintenance. You would still have to eventually replace the paint again. You would have to periodically inspect it and things like that, so.
Okay, right, thank you. Okay, so I'm next in the speaking order. So just to summarize, so you're just going to come back and ask us for some money to do some minor upgrades, repaint it, and, and then just extend the life of it for a number of years?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, and when it's finished, you don't want to turn it into a restaurant like Glassbridge?
The, the people of the future can decide.
Counselor Kelly, you're next.
Thank you. Mayor Katsch, you touched on what I wanted to conclude with. I, I forgot to mention that I support the plan. It makes sense to me. I do firmly believe that most citizens of Fort Saskatchewan would prefer to keep it as a landmark as long as possible. And it is certainly better as a landmark than any possible communication tower that you could put up in its location.
I'll agree to that. So looks like all the questions, so thank you very much for your presentation. We should have put these two first. They were fast. So with that, we do have one item still in camera. So I will take a motion to go in camera for the last item that we have is council committee preferences. Counselor Makin?
I'll make the motion that we move in camera for reasons covered under FOIP.
Thank you. Motion is closed. Please cast your vote. Oh, there it is. It's not. Did, did it come, did it register to you? Okay, so just tell us what, all in favor?
Yes, your worship, all in favor.
Okay, thank you. So we will go to in camera.